Councilmember Brightigan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protem Deidre Nguyen?
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. May I please ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the, to lead us in vocation, and then Councilmember John O'Neal to do the pledge? Thanks.
Sure, if everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to make decisions for the benefit of our Garden Grove community, may we use our very best skills and judgment to evaluate the merits of each matter before us, may we always act in accordance with what is best for our city and our fellow citizens, amen.
Join me as we salute the greatest flag in the world. Please remove your caps if you have one on. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as far.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Alrighty, um, thank you, and I believe at this time, before we go into the community spotlight presentations, I'd like to pull forward items 3A and 3B from the calendar as they pertain to the community spotlights. So can I pull forward items 3A and 3B and motion for a vote?
Oh, second.
Okay, roll, uh, or vote, we don't have to do the roll call thing anymore. Cool.
Right, no more verbal.
Roll call, okay. Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alrighty, then, thank you, that takes us back to 1A, which is presentations, community spotlight.
The community spotlight is recognizing Mr. Damian Lorton for being named Citizen of the Year in 2020 by the Cypress College. By the Cypress, excuse me, Cypress College Americana Foundation, and Mr. Rick Lerma and Ms. Maureen Blackman for being named. For being the 2020, 2021 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year, and Ms. Stipe is going to read our community spotlight tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy, mayor, and members of the city council. In 2020 and 2021, the Garden Grove City Council was not able to recognize individuals and organizations for their achievements and contributions to the community due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, tonight, this evening, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pleasure in bringing back our community spotlight and in recognizing three exceptional community members for their meaningful work in Garden Grove. First, would Damian Lorton, please come forward? Damian is our 2020 Cypress College Americana Awards Garden Grove Citizen of the Year, and each year, the Cypress College, Cypress College honors citizens from eight surrounding cities that form the college's primary service area at their annual Americana award ceremony. Award recipients are chosen based on their humanitarianism, philanthropy, and partnership efforts within the community. Damian brought One More Productions to Garden Grove and, to the historic Gem Theater in 2008, making arts accessible for everyone in the community at an affordable cost. To date, Damian has produced and directed over eighty fully staged plays, musicals, fundraisers, and events. He also raised over $200,000 for nonprofit organizations, including the Rotary Club. For his passion and spirit of service, Damian has been honored with the St. James Family Honors Award, the Paul Harris Fellow Award, the Los Angeles Times Man of the Year Award, and 101 Most Influential People by The Daily Pilot. The city of Garden Grove congratulates Damian for his meritorious recognition as the Cypress College 2020 Americana Awards Garden Grove Citizen of the Year, and I know nobody, everybody wants to clap for you now, but I'm going to ask that everyone, please hold your applause just for a few minutes, and we're going to ask Damian to stay up here for a few more minutes as we honor our next couple of honorees, so, so stay put. And now I want to ask Rick Lerma and Maureen Blackman to please come forward and join Damian. Okay, so Rick Lerma and Maureen Blackman are the 2020, 2021 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year, and every year, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce selects two dedicated, service-oriented individuals who demonstrate community pride through their volunteer efforts. It's the city's privilege to honor these two exceptional individuals, and we're going to begin with our Man of the Year, Rick Lerma. So Rick has dedicated his life to enhancing the community through volunteer efforts with many different service clubs in Garden Grove. In 2015 and 16, he received, he received the Silver Spoon Award from the Women's Division of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, and was named Garden Grove Citizen of the Year at the Cypress College Americana Awards in 2017 for his community involvement. Rick has been involved with the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, the Garden Grove Host Lions Club, Garden Grove Downtown Business Association, Garden Grove Community Foundation, Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, Garden Grove Police Advisory Commission, Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association, St. Columbus Catholic Church and School, and Garden Grove Medical Center and Hospital. Wow. Great job, Rick. Next, we have our Woman of the Year, Maureen Blackman. Maureen, a longtime resident of Garden Grove, is currently the president of the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. As president, she volunteers her time to organize neighborhood events, supports charities, attends and participates in Garden Grove City Council meetings, and she keeps the community updated and involved in all kinds of local issues. Maureen has spent countless hours of her own time to ensure Garden Grove is a wonderful place to live. She makes sure that the voices of Garden Grove residents are heard, and she sits down with local legislators to discuss local concerns and to help find solutions. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present a proclamation to Damian Lorton in recognition of his selection as 2020 Garden Grove Citizen of the Year, and Rick Lerma and Maureen Blackman for their selection as 2020 and 2021 Garden Grove Man and Woman of the Year. The city congratulates you for all of your well-deserved achievements and commends your noble efforts in bringing out the best in our community. Well done, everyone.
Alrighty, we will now move on to oral communications. I do have a handful of cards, so we'll go ahead and dive right in, starting with Mr. Leland Sisk. Come forward.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, I only have one question, and I have a comment. It involves three if, it talks about master landscaping maintenance for oleander trimming and storm drain maintenance. My question, how much of that $152,000 is for trimming, and how, I mean, how long is it, how many feet? And the comment is, do you know oleander is not native to California, and it's poisonous? I don't know why the city has that out there. If you carry it out by my house and have a look, I've got about, well, I have my whole front yard taken out, it's now a Southern California native plant garden. I've got about maybe eight or nine different sages blooming, I've got desert mallow blooming, I've got Eschebiophacularis, which is narrowleaf milkweed, just starting to come up. The city should consider doing that. If you go down to Tree of Life Nursery down in San Juan Capistrano, they'll sell you all these plants you want. I water my front garden three times a year, once in June, once in July, and once in August, it gets two beers worth of water. I drink two and it's done. Everything's blooming now, it hadn't been watered since last August, everything's blooming. When summer gets here, they'll go dormant, and they still look nice. You could get sticky monkey flower, you could also get, like I say, some of these different sages, they grow up to two or three feet tall, and they stop and they bloom. The butterflies and bees love it, and the thing you should know about the desert mallow, I have two different colors blooming in the front yard right now, desert mallow couldn't care less if you ever water it, it just doesn't care. It, it will bloom in the spring and the summer, it'll go dormant in the fall and the early winter, and it's perfectly happy, it always grows back every year. So perhaps the city should consider something like that, but like I say, poisonous? That scares me, not native. The bees and the plants from Southern California would love it if you helped them out, especially butterflies if you plant that narrowleaf milkweed. I'll even chip in a couple of dollars. Thank you.
Alrighty, Brian Maly, Brian Maly, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I want to start with a, an advisory from the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, and it says pension bond, pension obligation bonds. Their advisory, state and local governments should not issue POBs. I was running out of ink, on the front page, there's a big explanation mark, but it's a dark ballot, and my printer was running low. So I, I want to talk about item 5B. I was, I think, out of the 171,949 people in Garden Grove, our 88,000 registered voters, I think myself and the five or six of you were, and the other, were the only ones who were in this study session, which the study session was really conducted by the underwriter, and as you can see, you know, in the presentation, there's very small print of all the disclaimers. Everyone who spoke at that has a financial, they, they, they have a reason financially to be involved with this. And I think us putting this for a vote, which I don't know, I, I actually hired legal help to go through the trust and through the bond sale at my own expense, and there's a couple egregious things that stick out. One is that we are also financing current obligations, it is not just the UAL. I think it's structured, there's eighteen months that we can pay current out of the bond proceeds, which, what I think that does is, that creates an artificial surplus, then we suddenly have a reserve, we turn that surplus into a reserve, which, we're doing that with borrowed money. My, our, with, with the fund being, the UAL being 329 million, that's not discounting that, now that the state has dropped down to 6.8, that's going to add another, I ballpark 30 million, 24, so we're looking at we're financing $350 million. Plus, we're doing two years, well, it says eighteen months, but I'm sure that's so we can get two fiscal years in. Of our current obligation, that's what, 18 million a year? What did we pay last year? So anyway, that's going to put it up to close to $400 million. That's without the bond discount, that's without, I, from what I've seen on POBs, the cost of financing is about 1%. We're looking at close to half a billion dollars, $400 million in debt. I, I have all the greatest empathy for the cap, all of our great employees, but, you know, that's, we're talking 170, if you take all the current employees, all the retired, the ones waiting for things, that we're financing $170,000 per employee, that we are paying for it there. So anyway, my, I, I want to cut short. To the city council, the mayor, I, you would be absolutely remiss in your duties, because if you vote for this, that sets off, that sets it off, and I won't even go into the validation thing, this is a way to get around two-thirds vote. So I would ask the city that we have public hearings on this matter, this is almost a half a billion dollars out of, that's, part of it's out of my pocket. So anyway, I'm absolutely against, I hope you continue this matter, it is a very serious matter, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Tom Raiber?
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber. Again, I come before you and say, I've seen a miracle, the State of the Union address, the President of the United States Corporation, Harris and Pelosi did not have a mask on, and neither did anybody there, but also what I saw is what you should have seen too. There was no Biden shaking the hands of Harris or Pelosi, or Pelosi and Harris. Why? Were they there? Was it CGI? When it panned out from Biden's back to the audience, did you see the three justices sitting there still and the two generals as if they were frozen in time, or was it just a photo? Did you see Schumer stand up and clap, and nobody else was clapping, so he sat down and he stood up again and started clapping when everybody else was clapping? This is what we see on a tell, a vision. I wasn't going to come here tonight, but there's something happening right now between the United States and Russia and the Ukraine. So I did my research, 1991, 31 years ago, they separated as a republic from Russia, or the Soviet Union then. And there is no border between Russia and Ukraine, as we, United States, have a border between Canada and the United States and Mexico and the United States, that is every year given to the United Nations. But yet, for 31 years, Russia and Ukraine have not stated that there's a border. Once you find out that for 31 years, our government's been giving money to the Ukraine, and that Putin is our friend, and that he's taken out 11 Pentagon bioweapons that are in Ukraine under the ground, and other horrible stuff that's happening there, you're going to find out that NATO doesn't even have a contract to be there, and Putin was waiting for somebody to come to stand beside him, and that's Trump. If you think that Trump is gone, he is not. Now, let's go ahead and talk about what Biden just said, no Russian gas. I'm lucky I was born when I was, because I went through two gas crises, '77 and 1980, where you had to wait for two hours on odd and even license plates. These kids, these young ones, don't know about that. We still had to pay a high wage, but nobody knew about it. So the question is, is Garden Grove going to stand up for the Russians and the Ukraines and everybody else in Garden Grove to be one? Or are you going to allow this fake Biden to separate us, humans?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have to call you quits. Okay, so we do have a couple more cards for oral, we're going to put those on pause for a minute, because it's seven o'clock, and we have to go to item 4A at exactly seven o'clock tonight, so for the other couple cards I have, please hang tight, be patient, there's another item that we have to take at this time. So we'll move on to item 4A.
Item 4A is the fourth public hearing regarding the redistricting process post 2020 census, and introduction of an ordinance implementing one of two draft voting district maps, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove Adopting the City of Garden Grove District Map Following Review of the Population Changes Resulting from the 2020 Federal Decennial Census." And Ms. Stipe and Mr. Ely are here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy, mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, the city council is asked to review and discuss proposed voting district maps, hold a public hearing to receive public input on district boundaries, and introduce an ordinance to re-adopt the draft map, which is the current city council district map, or adopt the draft map proposed by the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee. Both of these maps and related data are contained in your agenda materials. For the benefit of the public, and has been previously shared, local governments must use census data to update their city council district lines to reflect how populations have changed after each decennial census. So consistent with federal law, city council districts are required to be nearly equal in population, and cities must engage their communities in the redistricting process by holding public hearings, public workshops, and doing public outreach. As with all of the city's prior public hearings and public workshop, we have both Vietnamese and Spanish translators in our audience tonight, who are on hand and can assist with any translation needs that anyone participating in person or participating via Zoom can utilize. Also, the city's consultant, Dave Ely of Compass Demographics, who's been leading the city's redistricting process, he's again here with us tonight remotely, and Mr. Ely is available to answer any questions that you might have about either of the two draft maps or any of the related demographic data. Unless there are any questions at this time, we're going to recommend that the council conduct the fourth public hearing to receive public input on the district boundaries, and then following the public hearing, the council is asked to consider and introduce an ordinance to re-adopt the draft map, which is the current city council district map, or introduce an ordinance to adopt the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee draft map. And so with that, Mr. Ely and staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We actually have to open this up for public hearing now, right?
Do we, do we ask questions first, or?
Only clarification questions.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and open the public hearing, so how do you want to do this, Madam Clerk?
You do have some cards, if you want to start with the people in the audience, and then we'll check with our deputy city clerk to find out if we have any callers.
Okay, we have four cards, so let's start with Lena Tran.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Lena Tran, and I'm the committee organizer for VietRise, and I'm in the lead for the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee, who we've met ever since June 2021. Today, I want to advocate for a map submitted by the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee. Garden Grove has one of the biggest mobile home concentrations, they're mainly located on the southern east Garden Grove, particularly along Westminster Boulevard and along the 22 freeway, near Garden Grove Boulevard and Harbor Boulevard. Mobile home residents are low-income and seniors who rely on Section 8 housing and SSA slash SSI disability income to pay their living expenses. Also, they represent the low-income Asian and Latino community. The Garden Grove Redistricting Committee map ensures that mobile home residents are kept together by creating a district south of the 22 freeway that keeps together two Vietnamese mobile home parks, Ocean Breeze Taylor Park and South Garden Grove Mobile Estates. It's important that we keep Vietnamese mobile home residents living in Little Saigon together because of the language barriers and shared lived experiences. For example, many use similar governmental assistance programs such as food stamps, Section 8 housing, and financial aid. By keeping these mobile home residents together and in a single district allows them to vote for a candidate that best represents their voices, and I urge you to please vote for a map to keep our mobile home residents together. In addition, creating horizontal districts that center the needs of apartment residents on Westminster Boulevard and Garden Grove Boulevard is crucial. Since 2015, the number of renter occupied housing units have seen a steady decline. According to the 2019 American Community Survey, there are 42,378 occupied housing units, 21,699 of which are renter occupied, accounting for nearly 50% of overall occupied housing units. This is a significant drop from 2015, when Garden Grove had 23,433 renter occupied housing units, a total of 1,734 renter occupied housing units gone. At the same time, owner occupied housing units increased by 1,731 from 23,948 in 2005 to 25,679 in 2019. A drop of 1,734 renter occupied housing units is a cause for concern, as population Garden Grove has not seen a significant population growth since the 2010 decennial census only increased by 1,066. This suggests that renter occupied housing units are being replaced with owner occupied housing units at an alarming rate. To address this change, districts should keep together high-density apartment areas requiring representation to center the interests and needs of apartment units, who have been marked declined in population since previous establishment of district boundaries in 2016. Also, I know we're still in conversations around like what maps there are, and there's still a lot to consider, so if we can't make a decision tonight, I please urge all city council members to move this conversation to perhaps March 22nd, and again, I please urge you to please take a consideration of like the DUIs we mentioned, mobile homes and such, into the selection of the map, and please support our map, thank you.
Thank you. Vincent Tran? Vincent Tran.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Vincent Tran. I'm the engagement coordinator for Viet Rise. Viet Rise is one of the leads for the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee. I want to speak in support of the committee's map, but also kind of lay a case on. Why you should select our map. So in creating this map, we paid close attention to ensuring how. That low-income and house-burdened communities such as apartment and mobile home renters will be kept together and strengthening their voice, ensure that their needs are prioritized by their representatives. Throughout the eight months that we met with local residents, we engaged in the process to kind of identify the COIs. But also figure out what are the lines that best suit and also kind of represent the lived experiences of Garden Grove residents. The committee's map keeps District One, Two, Five, and Six mostly intact and the same. The major changes fall in central Garden Grove. So we chose to create horizontal districts rather than retain the vertical districts. District Three now is north of the twenty-two freeway and centers around the businesses and multifamily housing on Garden Grove Boulevard. And District Four is south of the twenty-two freeway and centers the businesses and multifamily housing on Westminster Boulevard. We believe that creating horizontal districts that center around the two main commerce districts, but also keeps these large concentration of apartment renters. Truly reflects how Garden Grove residents live and interact with each other and the city. It'll also ensure that whoever represents these two districts would ensure a balance between commercial interests and also the needs of renters. Garden Grove, you know, continues to be, to be more vibrant each year with new developments continually appearing. And similar to Stanton with the success of like Radio Thirty-Nine. We are seeing like this resurgence of Beach Boulevard and, you know, developments of like housing units being created. And we can see the same thing on Garden Grove Boulevard and Chapman Avenue with like Sprouts, you know, opening up recently, and also Westminster Boulevard. But this development continues to take place, and I believe at the cost of renters in the city. You know, taking back, y'all back to two thousand three, nearly twenty years ago, the Garden Grove City Council approved to displace mobile home residents at Travel County RV Park. Through eminent domain to approve the construction of the Great Wolf Lodge. For nearly ten years, low-income families from Travel County RV Park had to endure a ten-year legal battle with the city to ensure those residents would receive fair relocation money. For ten years of stress, they only got two hundred and fifty to ten thousand dollars in reallocation or relocation funds. While the decision was made by previous council and before we instituted a district maps. Who's to say that, you know, the apartment residents of, you know, Garden Grove Boulevard or Westminster Boulevard wouldn't face the same kind of issues? And right now, like as I traveled down on Westminster Boulevard, you know, you see a lot of apartments next to big business complexes. And, you know, ten years from now, where are those residents from the Travel County RV Park? Like, do we know if they were able to relocate in Orange County? What's their well-being at? You know, we don't know those answers, and the same thing's gonna happen to, say, like Vietnamese residents or Vietnamese seniors who rely on a lot of the services that are offered in, you know, the Korean district or Little Saigon. And if those folks are being displaced, then who takes responsibility for them? You know, development is obviously great, but not at the expense of displacement. And currently with the, the vertical maps, the majority of the apartments located on Garden Grove Boulevard and Westminster Boulevard are being split into two districts rather than being kept whole. So just to conclude, I want to request the city today to, one, kind of take into consideration those communities of interest and also. You know, support the map that we submitted, but also perhaps extend the conversation for the districts. And we really want a robust conversation on, you know, why people support the current district maps, but also why people support, you know, our current map. You know, the redistricting process hasn't.
Thank you. Please wrap up.
But yes, include, please extend the conversation, but also, yeah, we want a more robust conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibs.
First off, Mayor Jones, members of the council. Most of the speakers that have come up before me have had more than three minutes, and important issues such as this should be allotted more than three minutes. I want to start off with a quote. From President Franklin D. Roosevelt. "The only sure bulwark of continuing liberty is a government strong enough to protect the interests of the people. And a people strong enough and well-informed to maintain its sovereign control over government." So being well-informed is very important. You're calling for a hearing. The fourth hearing. "In the interest of ethics and fairness. The question must be asked, have you increased and improved civic engagement?" And I would say not only for this hearing, but in general, for public participation of city council meetings as well as hearings. I would have to say the answer is no. For example, you allow people to call in for this public hearing on Zoom. Yet despite repeated requests to this council and to the mayor, why aren't you allowing like you did during part of COVID? Even if COVID is over with. Why not allow people to call in? Who can't be here in person? Not everybody can come down here, but they could maybe call in. So if this council and mayor are serious about increasing civic participation. And improving civic participation and engagement. Then why not allow the people to call in for your regular council meetings? You're allowing the call in for the hearing, but not for the council meeting. You allowed call-ins during part of COVID, but you're not allowing it now. Why? The question becomes, why are you limiting public comment? For the council meetings? So you have the Zoom number here. I want to ask you to please put that in for our, for your regular council meetings. Now, the city of Long Beach has sent out on redistricting maps. Postcards to all the residents and businesses. Has the city of Garden Grove done that? Okay, maybe they have, maybe they haven't. Why not have an insert in the water bill? Has that been done? Okay, so. You have to inform the people and get them engaged, but a lot of people think it's a joke because we come down here, we sit, we talk to you, we only get three minutes. It's not enough time. And you don't even allow people to call in. It's a no-brainer. Okay, why do I have to come up here repeatedly and ask you a no-brainer question and a request? And that is, allow the public to call in and make their comments.
Point of order. What does this have to do with redistricting?
Well, it has to do with civic participation.
Oral communications for the regular council meeting, you're, you're taking away from.
Well, I just mentioned what the city of Long Beach has been doing, which is postcard mailers and inserts. I suggest you have a, do. We're at the end of the process here, but. I ask your, this council, not only for this hearing, but in general, to please improve civic engagement, allow the public to call in for all the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Blackman.
Let me get back to my notes here. First, I have some signatures in support of the current map. You want me to give them to Terry? So I'm Maureen Blackman, longtime resident of Garden Grove. I went back to some of our council meetings in two thousand fifteen. And kind of the comments that were mentioned tonight about robust. Nobody had to tell us to be robust in two thousand fifteen. We were robust. We were very engaged. I was kind of surprised. We dragged everyone we knew to meetings. We had maps, phone calls, texts. We did a meet on Main. I even dragged Bert Ashland out to several meetings, which is pert near impossible. I didn't even promise him a drink. We felt like we must get it right, so we drew and redrew and, and every time we submitted something, we put it to David. And he told us if it was legally right or wrong. We were engaged. Like I said, we didn't have to ask the city to put a flyer in the water bill to make us engaged. We did it because we felt it was our duty to do it. We considered many options and we passed them. Around the city to see through the various groups. In the end, the vote, the council voted to adopt the map that we're currently using, even though it wasn't everyone's favorite choice. The map was submitted by Kim and a team that worked to build a consensus in the community with various groups. The people who came out to support that map claimed that all of, they wanted all of Little Saigon, not in one district, that they wanted them in two. They considered that to be packing. I personally hadn't really heard that word before, but they all seemed to know it, and they were pretty intent on it. Two was here that night, even though she wasn't a councilperson. I believe the audience was full. Now, this current map that looked a lot like the maps that were rejected puts Little Saigon back in one district, exactly the reason that people rejected it in the first place. The current map is legal. I ask you to stay with it. I also learned that during this whole time, the council people who were scurrying around, George was one, John was one, Two was one, Fat was one, Kim was one. And Stephanie was one. So I, I call that civic engagement. That's how it's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the pink cards I have. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item that didn't submit a card? Okay. Now we'll go on to. What's next, Terry? The Zoom?
Yeah, just before we go into that, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we did have three emails that were sent in and you all received them. And we had two people that were in favor of the current map and one person that was in favor of the, of the new, of the new map. And that was Elizabeth Ragnold, and the two people in favor were John O'Donnell and Kurt Moore.
Okay, Mayor, it looks like we do have callers, and I am going to ask callers if they want to speak on this matter, to raise their hand by pressing star nine. Again, if we have callers in the queue that would like to speak, please raise your hands. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with caller ending in six-two-seven. If you please unmute yourself by pressing star six. And please clearly state your name for the record. You may proceed. Caller ending in six-two-seven. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Great, yes. My name is Roberto. I work with Resilience. I've been able to show up in person the last couple of meetings. And, you know, very happy to be in partnership here with the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee, you know. And the folks that have put in the effort, communities that put in the effort to, you know, get the data together to show you all why our map is, is a very good map, you know, and kind of. You know, outlines the different communities of interest, particularly, you know, I think considering a vertical map makes sense. You know, with the twenty-two freeway as a natural boundary, you know, to keep the Vietnamese community together in the south end. You know, it's very important. And, you know, in looking through the data, you can really see the different communities of interest, right? You have the renter community, you have the Vietnamese community, the Latinx community, single-family home community, mobile home communities, the renter community. And so there's like, you know, lots of communities to keep in mind. And thankfully, you know, I was able to kind of engage community members and youth that are, you know, impacted by the city of Garden Grove and their policies. And so they're gonna be calling in right now. They're the other callers, and we're really excited to have Garden Grove youth voices here on the call. And, you know, I just want to say that the Garden, Garden, the city of Garden Grove deserves to have the representation that makes up its city, right? And so, you know, I'm really happy and proud of, of the folks here that are gonna be calling in. But, yeah, I support the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee map, and I hope you all adopt that tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in numbers eight-six-nine, please press star six to unmute yourself. Caller ending in. We can hear you. Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, great. So my name is Dorothy Nguyen. I'm writing as a resident of Garden Grove Third District. I live on Magnolia and Westminster. So I'm speaking as a Garden Grove community member and a member of the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee. With my affiliation, it's obvious that I support the redistricting committee map. When drawing the new district map, I would like to ask you to consider the community of interest pertinent to the community. Our map has six district boundaries to meet the requirements and has considered community input. Largely, these maps are data-driven and should merit consideration. So I'll talk about the six districts. First, consider the affluent, longtime, single-family homeowner community in western Garden Grove using the twenty-two freeway, Nguyen Street, Orangewood Avenue. Magnolia Street, Lamson Street, and Loma, Loma Street as natural boundaries. Next, there's the high-density, single-family homeowners in north Garden Grove using Lamson Avenue, Magnolia Street, and Orangewood Avenue as natural boundaries. Next is the Asian-American community with apartment residents along Garden Grove Boulevard between Nguyen and Euclid, with the Korean district business located on Garden Grove Boulevard using Trask, Nguyen, Loma, Lamson, Euclid, and the twenty-two freeway as natural boundaries. The fourth district is the Vietnamese community. There's a. So District D, which we're talking about, is a federal Voting Rights Act compliant district with the highest Asian citizen voting age population of sixty-six point one percent. So remember the Little Saigon businesses on Westminster, the second-largest mobile home park concentration. And apartment residents on Westminster Boulevard using, using neighborhoods in their maps, using south of the twenty-two freeway together, and using Trask and New Hope Street as natural boundaries. The fifth district, the single-family homeowner, homeowners, apartment and mobile home residence with Latino communities in Euclid Street, Trask Avenue. Garden Grove Boulevard and Haster Street as natural boundaries. And finally, the Latino district, and the largest concentration of mobile home parks. The low-income communities, the working-class communities, mixed-immigration status families, monolingual communities, tenant communities, and housing cost burdened communities using Haster Street. Garden Grove Boulevard and New Hope Street as natural boundaries. And a final note, I wanted to ask you to please consider extending the conversation on final district maps. Until the final meeting on March twenty-second, just to have, you know, complete and total input, and we've covered all of our boundaries and, and, you know. What would be need to be discussed. Consider the people you represent in the communities, shared interests and experiences that characterize each of these districts. So please keep our communities of interest together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in six-eight-three, please press star six to unmute yourself. And please clearly state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Please proceed.
Hello. All right, thank you so much. So hello, council members. My name is Cleanne. I am a resident in Garden Grove, and I work with Resilience, Orange County. From my experience, my friends and their families are mostly renters who are dealing with high rents every year. And those who live in mobile homes have hard times affording unless there are multiple families coming together to pay it. Therefore, you all need to have rent control and more affordable housing for low-income families. Because it is impossible for families to have a place to live when rent is too expensive and housing has never been affordable if multifamily members have to come together. And that is why I support the Gigi Redistricting Committee map. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in four-four-zero. Please press star six to unmute yourself and clearly state your name for the record. Caller ending in. We hear you. Please proceed.
Hello, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hello, council members. My name is Andrea, and I work for Resilience, Orange County, and I am a current resident of Garden Grove. As a current resident of District Six and neighboring District Five, I have firsthand experience of the vulnerable communities of renters and mobile homes of our areas. Having family and friends living in the mobile home areas, there's a constant fear of losing their homes due to the gentrification. Of the area and the increase of rent and not having the right support to be helped economically. While our District Six and Five communities are not fairly represented, it is quite impossible to have affordable living when mobile home areas. to have affordable living when mobile home areas are under the least with multi, through multifamily compact areas. As a Garden Grove resident, I demand the consideration of the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee map proposal. And I think it is important that we have the representation of elected officials who will support my community of Latino and Asian-dominated districts. And lastly, we ask that you consider the Zoom and option for the next meeting going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in nine zero five, if you can please press star six to unmute yourself and please state your name for the record. Okay, caller ending in four four zero, please, uh, press star six to unmute yourself. And please clearly state your name for the record. Okay, next caller ending in numbers nine zero five, please press star six to unmute yourself. And please clearly state your name for the record. Caller ending in nine zero five. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay. Um, hi, my name is Valerie. I'm working with Resilience, Orange County, and I'm a resident of Garden Grove. Um, and the apartments where I currently live, the rent increases dearly, so I've seen firsthand how the rent continues to increase uncontrollably. I've also noticed the building of new apartment complexes around me, and yet they're, are, they are not suitable for low-income families. Considering that currently fifty percent of the population in Garden Grove is renters and that number keeps going down, it is clear that many people are getting displaced because of gentrification and the lack of affordable rent. It is important for me that we have elected officials that are renters just like me, and that is why I support the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee map and also ask you to please offer a Zoom and option for the upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller ending in one eight nine, please press star six to unmute yourself and please clearly state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we, we can. Please proceed.
Okay, hello, my name is Tanya. I work with Resilience, Orange County, and I am a current resident of Garden Grove, specifically the Meadowlock Estate Mobile Home Park. I have personally been exposed to the difficulty of living in a mobile home and see that it is nearly impossible to live as a single household because it is too expensive and it only keeps getting more expensive. The only way for my family to stay in this mobile home is to rent out two of our rooms in order to afford it. This is our home and has always been our home, yet vulnerable communities like my family and I are forced to live with a lot of people because we fear being displaced. This is my experience living in Garden Grove, and this is why I ask that there be rent control, and I fully support the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee map, and ask that you offer Zoom and option for the future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in numbers eight four six, please press star six to unmute yourself and clearly state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Janice Sis. I am a student and resident of Garden Grove, and I am currently working with Resilience, Orange County. I would like to see a city council member that is representative of me and my community as a woman, Latina, and renter. Rent has been steadily increasing, making it nearly impossible to live in a single-family rented home. I have had my community members be displaced by gentrification that only led to even more increasing rent. Renters are disappearing because there are no affordable housing available for our communities. I want you all to consider if you can accurately represent these people, if you can relate to the priorities of these vulnerable communities. It is for these reasons and more that I am here urging you to take up the Garden Grove Redistricting Committee map and to have a Zoom and option at the next meeting. Thank you.
That's, uh, so it looks like we have all calls that had the raised hands addressed. And Mayor, that it looks like it's all the callers in the queue.
Okay. Sorry about that. And you already talked about the emails, so we've covered it. With that, we will close the public hearing and I'll go to my colleagues for any comments or actions. Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you. I, I have a couple of questions. Um, David, I'm not sure if you have ready, um, the submission by the community that had the heat maps, um, available to, to share. If not, that's fine. I can just speak to it. I just wanted to see if you were able to pull that up.
I don't have anything prepared for tonight, no.
Okay. Um, just a, a couple of points. Um, the initial sentiment of why we went to district elections in the first place was Latino representation. In the sixty-year-plus history of Garden Grove, there had never been a Latino representative. I am the first. And I think George had a little bit in there, so he kind of counts as maybe point four percent. Um, and that's a shame. And I, and I, and I look at the map and I really want it to be subjective and open to what the community was bringing forward, but ultimately, um, my biggest concern is that it decreases the plurality in District Five. Um, it's a two-point-seven percent drop, um, of Latino population in District Five, and I, I have some serious qualms with that because that decreases the opportunity at some point in time to potentially have more Latino representatives. Um, and then looking in the proposal, I, I did a, you know, a third look at it last night just to really figure out where I was sitting with things because if I'm being honest, in each map, my district stays exactly the same. Um, so this is an argument for my councils to make on behalf of their districts, but I, I just wanted to give my feedback because I know, folks know that I authored the map, and so I wanted to give my two cents. One of the other things that I noticed is most of the mobile home parks are in my district. I am sorry if some individuals feel that I have not done my responsibility to represent you, but I would like to point to the fact that I won with over seventy-five percent of the vote in my reelection, and I feel that I have done an amazing job trying to advocate. As someone who was a renter up until March of last year, um, I've tried to bring forward, um, the perspective of renters on countless occasions on this dais. Um, I believe my, uh, council colleagues have, have heard an earful from me about what it is to be a, a renter and the struggles that we face in this district, but ultimately I am one vote. Um, in regards to renters, clusters or apartments are spread pretty widely across the city. And I was looking at the proposal and it was interesting to me that the mobile home parks were circ, circ, uh, were circled. There was a two in the district that the argument is being made for, and then the rest of them were all in my district, but that was not done for apartments. And again, I think that speaks to the fact that there's clusters of them everywhere. Um, I don't think that this is an issue of, uh, the maps not working in favor for the individuals that don't feel like they have a voice. I think it's an issue with your council member. Um, and so that's something you have to take up with the people here that are up here representing you in your particular district. And if that's me, please feel free, my, I always give my personal cell phone number. I am always readily available and accessible, and I have not heard, um, some of the comments that are being shared today in the last five years. Um, I feel like I've been the only one making those comments on this dais. So, um, I'm glad to hear more folks are getting involved and that are, are participating in the discussion. Um, but for me, I was elected, I, I proposed this map for one specific reason, and that was Latino representation, and I will not be supporting something that diminishes the plurality or the majority of Latinos in this city. Um, we have gone unrepresented for too long, um, and I won't be moving backwards on that point. The other issue that I have is that in this new map, um, it increases the deviation from district to district significantly more than the current map. Um, mind you, in two thousand and sixteen, when this first came forward, the deviations were much lower, but due to the increase of over a thousand, uh, residents in Garden Grove, that def, def, uh, deviation has somewhat increased more than what I would have been comfortable for. I tried my best to keep it at one percent initially in two thousand and sixteen. Um, so if anything, the only thing I was really interested was in seeing the deviations lowered, and I attempted multiple times to kind of shift population, um, from the top of my, I'm looking at the map, if folks are looking at the camera and it looks like I'm looking on the beyond, I'm looking at the map in front of me to kind of remember where my talking point was. And that's, I try to shift precincts from the top of my district and also at the bottom to see if I could make that happen. But ultimately, that just threw off the numbers too far where I couldn't make up for it in other areas. So it just wasn't possible for me to decrease the prop, the deviation of two-point-four-four percent in District Six. Um, and the, that, that, that was lower than the median of two-point-something in, in District Four. So I'll just leave it at that. Um, I, I made the comments I needed to make, and, and as I pointed out before, my district stays exactly the same in either option, so I leave it to my colleagues to actually engage and, and put forth their opinion on why or why not we should keep one or the other. Um, y'all are, are fighting it out for your residents, so I hope you do a good job of making those points very clear tonight.
Uh, Mayor Proton.
Uh, just wanted to chime, chime in a little bit. Uh, first of all, just want to say thank you to all, all the calling today and everybody who showed up today at the, for the public hearing. That's a very strong, um, how we speak our voice. Uh, go back to the map. I mean, um, Councilmember Kim already expressed very clearly, at the same time, when you look, I mean, throughout the call, I, I hear about mobile home park and apartment renter. Apartment renter is across the city. I, I mean, if you look at the current map, for District Three, we have all Bixby, the whole block of, of apartment, right? Uh, not just Westminster, but it's, it's across all districts, not just one district alone. So that's going to be, if you want, I mean, what we want to focus on is focus on is to be able to get a good representation, who can speak, um, represent your district, represent for, to be inclusive. But just having a two reason to focus on rental or mobile home, I think that's not as strong enough. But at the, at the moment, I mean, my point of view is we have been working very hard to, back in two thousand and sixteen for the new map with all, um, input from across, um, all the, uh, different organizations, different communities. Uh, I, Maureen Blackman, you, you were very vocal and very strong advocating for the map as well. So, I mean, with that, speak for all, is, we have very, very great community input for the map. I leave that to my colleagues.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, um, you know, I heard some of the comments during the public com, uh, comments there and, you know, talking about lack of community engagement and this, and honestly, there was a lot of community engagement on this issue, more than, you know, I mean, of course, you know, at the official meetings, small turnouts. But all of us have met with numerous groups, numerous individuals, numer, everybody wanting to give us their two cents. And that's kind of what representative democracy is, right? Everybody's kind of coming, I know I personally met with four different groups, including, um, your guys' group. Um, and, uh, and I did, I did a couple Zoom meetings and a couple other things to get all the perspectives. So the community engagement was definitely there. It might not have been at this particular meeting, but throughout this whole process, it's been there. Uh, you know, I, I was really kind of like this. I'm like, you know, what, you know, and I could see some pros and cons on both, both perspectives. Um, but honestly, when, when you try to make the argument of renters versus homeowners, I, that's where I lose it. Cause quite frankly, and we're local government and we have very little to do over rental, rental, anything, mobile homes, apartments, very little to do with anything. And we're not a charter city, so things like, uh, rent control, and even if we were inclined to go that way, they can't. So, you know, honestly, it doesn't matter if you're a renter, a homeowner, everybody wants the same thing from their local government, the same things. There's really no difference. Everybody wants a safe environment to raise their children. Everybody wants the parks clean. Everybody wants the streets moving without potholes. Everybody wants the police to come when they call or the fire department to come when they call. They want clean, safe drinking water for their families. So I, I kind of take exception when they start drafting maps based on, on renters versus homeowners, that kind of thing. To me, it's kind of silly, and I think Councilman Winn summed it up, you know? That, that's where you hold your council person accountable. If they're not listening to you, and I can guarantee you, I've heard Councilman Winn talking about Reynolds for, since I sat here first time on this dais, she brings it up quite frequently. So, um, you know, honestly, I, I, I don't see a need for that. I don't see that there's a, any kind of real need for that. Um, so with that being said, you know, the change on the map actually kind of benefits me, um, with the new proposed map, but I, I don't see, honestly, for the city as a whole, I don't see that it really helps. And I, and I understand that there's a cost associated for swapping, um, maps, if I'm not mistaken, twenty to thirty thousand dollar cost associated. So, you know, for those reasons, I, I just think I pres, I, I think we should just stick with what we have right now. This was just done a matter of, you know, what, six years ago? We didn't even get a full ten-year census out of it. We had a lot of community engagement then. We've had a lot of a community engagement now, so I, I don't see any compelling need to switch, uh, or, or we already have. Go and do it pretty quick. So George had a lot, a lot of things to say there that I would, um, agree with. Uh, for me, uh, the, the district maps are imaginary lines, uh, but they do create, um, accountability. So I think they're good. The districts are good in a way of, of accountability to your constituents that, that elected you, right? Um, as far as, um, pros and cons, both these maps have their pros and cons, just like any map would have. Um, but for me, I represent every group you're talking about in this room, mobile home parks, a lot of apartments, single-family homes. And when you start bringing race into it, I, I, that's all a blur to me because I see everybody the same. And we all have a vote on this council that affects the city citywide. So if, if I need to take care of something on the other side of the city, I'm going to get with the council person in that area or talk to the mayor. We all work together to make sure everybody's taken care of. So those are kind of imaginary lines as far as the votes go, but, uh, yeah, the, the part about, you know, low-income housing, that's, that's a, that's a nationwide discussion, uh, low-income housing. We've got inflation right now. We've got, uh, a lot of state mandates and other things that, that require us to do certain things, and there's a lot of wheels in motion here. So, but as far as the district maps go, the pros and cons, you could create any map and you're going to have pros and cons, but, you know, I, I want to represent everybody. And I think I should get a vote, Kim, on a, on a, kind of a happy note here. I should get an honorary Latino vote since I've been with one for thirty-seven years. My wife, my wife immigrated from Costa Rica, so, you know, I can speak a little Spanish. So why, don't try, speak Spanish and think I'm not listening. So, um, uh, but anyway, I don't see enough change pro in this new map that would encourage me to vote to change the map. I like the map we have. In fact, the reason I do like the maps we have is actually, I understand the, the, the argument for three and four, but actually I think it disenfranchises some of District Two, although you might gain some people that would want to be in District Two, but I'm losing, uh, the, the neighborhood right next to the high school. So I would be representing the high school, but the students that go there or the families that live there, I may not represent anymore. So that, to me, this new map actually hurt District, not, I don't know, hurt, but it changed District Two more drastically than maybe the rest. And again, I look at it as imaginary lines because we all represent the same and it creates accountability to that, to that group, you know, for that council person. So thanks.
Well, um, first of all, I would like to thank you, uh, Vince Tran for working very hard to create the proposed new map. Uh, it's not bad. It's very good. Uh, however, it's, it's very much similar to, uh, the current map with the exception of District Three and Four. Instead of going from east to west, it's now going north and south with Trask Avenue as the dividing. Uh, I, and I will be, happen to be, uh, in District Three if we adopt the new, uh, the new map. Too bad, uh, changing a district doesn't allow me to run for reelection. But, uh, now, other than that, I think I hear two, uh, argument. One is to, uh, help the mobile home park, uh, people. I think the new map will not be as effective in helping the mobile home park. Why is that? Because now you put two mobile home parks into one district. So you only have one representative now, as opposed to you have Dieter Nguyen of District Three, the, with the, with the current map, you have Dieter Nguyen representing one mobile home park and I represent the others. You know, over the last few years, I frequently, uh, came to the South Grove Mobile Home Park on Westminster Avenue and Taft. I talk to them a lot. And in fact, over the last few years, um, Councilmember Kim Nguyen and, uh, Dieter Nguyen and I have been advocating to find a solution to help those people who, uh, stay at those mobile home park. Why is that? Because we under- Why is that? Because we understand the, a lot of the Vietnamese elderly live in those parks. They have fixed income, and if the rent keep in, the landlord keep increase the rent, they can no longer afford it. So we organized a few Tahoe meetings, bringing Senator Tom Umbert from Sacramento, bringing Congressman Lou Coria, Alan Law and Toh to meet with them. Now, of course, the city like us, we cannot, you know, that is not the jurisdiction that we have to try to, to fight it. But we try to bring those people who can help find a solution, to meet with the resident, to hear them out. So I think in terms of achieving a solution or well representative for the mobile home park resident of Garden Grove, I think either map is fine. In fact, there is a mobile home park, a very big one, belonging to District Number 5 of Councilmember Stephanie Coffenstein's. It's right on Garden Grove and West. Many of my friends live there. So I think, I think by spreading it out, I think you have better well representative than, than just packing it. Secondly, as far as the second argument that I heard, you want to bring, to keep Little Saigon together as south of the freeway twenty-two, that's, that's not, that might be good, but it also has some negative impact. Because Little Saigon now no longer the area south of freeway twenty-two. We now move into Garden Grove Boulevard. We move to Chapman and Brookhurst. We move out everywhere. So I think, I think with the current webs, a current map, moving west to east, and consistently from one to two, to three, to four, to five, to six, I think that is, is a lot better for the Vietnamese community, for the Latino community, and for many other ethnicity. But I, in my exchange with Mayor Steve Jones, we, we realized one thing. Redistricting is not mean to serve, you know, low-income rental, because we all have to deal with that. It's mean to, like Councilmember Kim Nguyen mentioned earlier, is so that we have a representative from the Latino community. And that District 5 isn't changed much. So I, I would lean to, to what, staying with the current map, because it serves it very, very well, and it doesn't cause us any extra money if we, if we stay instead of switching.
We're going around the horn here, aren't we?
Yeah.
I think I'll just make a quick comment that obviously I'm honored and it's, and it's a privilege to serve District 5. This is my second term, so I was elected twice to this district. I'd like to think, and I try my very hardest to serve everyone in District 5, just as I've served and helped people in just about every district in our city. I think to John's point, we're voting for the city as a whole. And so my obligation and my, what I desire to do is help everyone. I think that if we look at the 2020 census, I didn't see an uptick or a growth in numbers that made me feel that this map had run its course. I think that this map is relatively new and young, and I think benefits and works not only with the makeup of it per district, with the councilmembers that we have in place, and just with the city as a whole. So for myself personally, I think this map still has some legs to it. And I think we need to let it run its course, and it should still be the map that we are using here in Garden Grove. I think all of us up here truly are honored to serve the city and serve everyone in this city. My door's always open. I get calls all hours of the night, and it's, and it's a privilege and an honor to serve. But as of tonight and of this meeting, I'd like to keep the map that we have in place.
Kim.
Thank you. I just wanted to indicate a couple more issues that I have. So I, one thing is, I don't particularly agree with the twenty-two as a natural divider. I have some issues with what I think to be an overreach from District 1 into taking over some of the area in District 2. I think Councilmember John O'Neill spoke to that. I think that's the Rancho, that Rancho neighborhood. And it was very important for me to, to balance out the number of high schools per district and the neighborhoods that surround them, so that the families and students going to those schools are able to be represented, be in the same district and represented by the same person. But again, I just want to drive home my, my biggest concern is the decrease in plurality in District 5 for Latino population, and that really derives from south of Trask, east of Euclid. That's really where I think that, that deviation went down, was by including that in District 4. But I think in order to not have those deviations be so drastic from one another, that was needed in the new District 4. But it, it was not, if you, if you look at it, it's the same keyhole that we currently have there essentially, that looks funky, and it's the only one that looks that bad in the entire district, and it's the one that I had to do. But it's the one that pained me to do, because you're, you're really dividing up a neighborhood. This is where the Woodbury Park is, just bottom, bottom corner of my district, for those of you looking at the map over there. I, I was trying very hard to avoid that keyhole, but there just wasn't a way to, to move those precincts in order to make that happen. And so the fact that now that kind of area is divided into three districts is really where I have issue and in the decrease of Latino population in 5. It's already hard enough, but, you know, I've, I've had a great relationship with Councilmember Coffenstein in working that neighborhood. We've been able to accomplish getting a grant for that park. So, I mean, I think we're, we're addressing the needs of those communities, so. But for me, that's, those are my two pain points as far as just the, the obvious that I've already mentioned is the overreach of District 1 into 2, and then the bottom section that now makes it that kind of four, four districts surrounding the Woodbury Park area. I call it the Woodbury Park neighborhood. We don't have established neighborhoods like other cities do, but, you know, maybe if I keep calling it, that will eventually make it an official neighborhood. But that was one area that was, that was painful for me back in 2016, and this just made it a lot worse. So I wanted to just kind of bring that one back.
One more. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, and again, that was one of the things I wanted to reiterate. Having the two high schools in the one district, I think they went to great pains to split the high schools up in all the districts as well. So there, you know, one, one in, pretty much one for every district type of thing. But the main thing I wanted to do is really, really thank those young folks who put the effort in doing this. All right? They, they went to a lot of work, a lot of trouble. And, you know, quite frankly, I, I met with them on a Zoom call last week, and they really, they really, you know, did a, a great job. I mean, honestly, this was one of the maps, for the most part, that was done by the professionals years ago. So obviously, there was some thought that, in what you guys put in. So, and I just wish we had more community engagement with young people like you guys, honestly. So thank you for all the effort and, and time that you put into this process.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Not to nitpick or anything here, but are, is that what everyone is seeing at home? Just David Ely's name? I, I kind of wish that through this conversation and as we're all talking, we could have maybe been showing the current map, the map that was presented by...
They're seeing all of you, so.
Okay.
That's just for inside here.
Okay, I'm just, you know, as, as these conversations are going on, I was just curious what everyone at home was actually seeing? Because that's, yeah, thank you.
I guess, move.
Look at that.
There we go.
Yeah, we could quickly...
I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion then. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Please, go ahead. I think we've heard it all.
I move that we bring the, the current map back next week for final...
Mayor members of the City Councils, so what you have before you is a draft ordinance that you can, you can approve and pass to second reading at your next meeting. And the motion would be to adopt the ordinance with the current map as attachment A.
And that's my motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are we doing roll call vote, or did we ever figure out something?
Let's try this.
Oh, we can do touchscreen, because she's got a mouse.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Five minutes? Right? Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. And we'll go back to oral communications where we left off before we had to skip ahead to item four. We do have two cards left, so Nick Dibs, is he still around?
I think he's out in the hallway out there.
All right. He already spoke earlier anyways, so Basil Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Basil Starr. I'm a founder and CEO of Polari Group, a developer of sustainable communities. I'm also a Ukrainian-American, a former honorary consul of Ukraine, and an ambassador-at-large to the United Nations on matters of sustainable development. As you guessed, I'm here to talk about an international matter. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for delaying my comments so I don't have to speak after the previous commenter who spoke on the matter. The events of the past two weeks shocked the world. Russian invasion of Ukraine is the biggest conflict since World War II. According to UN Refugee Agency, 2 million refugees left Ukraine and millions are displaced internally, with casualties expected in thousands. As we speak, the Russian forces are advancing on capital Kiev and have encircled strategic cities of Mariupol and Kharkiv. Mariupol, a city of 500,000 people, has been left without lights, water, electricity, or mobile service for eight days now. I'm encouraged to see the international support for Ukraine and Ukrainian people. The United Nations has passed a resolution for which 141 countries voted condemning Russia for its actions. I'm encouraged to see the support of the Vietnamese-American community, who have rallied on Sunday in the city of Westminster in support of Ukraine and Ukrainian people. There are a lot of parallels to what has happened in Vietnam during the Vietnamese war and the refugee crisis that followed. Beverly Hills City Council last week has voiced its opinion through a resolution I would like to read. Whereas on February 24th, 2022, Russia launched a large-scale military invasion of Ukraine, making an escalation to a conflict that began in 2014. Whereas the invasion is the largest conventional military attack in Europe since World War II. Whereas the U.S. Department of Treasury pursuant to various executive orders imposed sanctions against Russia for its harmful foreign activities, including violating well-established principles of international law, such as respect for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of other states. Whereas the Council of the City of Beverly Hills strongly condemns the Russian unjustified, unprovoked, and premeditated invasion of Ukraine. Now, therefore, the Council and City of Beverly Hills resolves as follows. The City of Beverly Hills strongly condemns with moral outrage the unjustified, unprovoked, premeditated, uncivilized, evil, barbaric, abhorrent, and inhumane Russian invasion of Ukraine under the oppressive Putin regime. Section 2, the City of Beverly Hills hereby appoints Ukraine President Volodymyr Zelensky as an honorary citizen of Beverly Hills. Section 3, the City Council hereby directs staff to research and implement any federal sanctions, including sanctions against any Russian oligarchs and other sanctions which the city has the authority to implement, such as divesting of any fund possessing Russian assets, lobbying calpers regarding divesting of any fund possessing Russian assets, and terminating contracts, if any, with Russian firms. Section 4, the City of Beverly Hills calls upon peace-loving cities and people throughout the world to take this same or similar action. It is time for the world to unite on this matter, and I hope that City of Garden Grove will join the global community to make a stand. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Nick Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, I'd like to refer to this quote from President Franklin Delano Roosevelt. "The only sure bulwark of continuing liberty, the only sure bulwark of continuing liberty is a government strong enough to protect the interests of the people and a people strong enough and well-informed to maintain its sovereign control over government," unquote. So in the interest of people being informed, I would like to mention that there's an upcoming event tomorrow morning hosted by Senator Tom Umberg and other dignitaries. It'll be Wednesday, March the 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the County Operations Center in Santa Ana, and it's the Career and Technical Education and Apprenticeship Event for young people. And so you can contact Senator Umberg's office if you can't be there in person, get the information. What does this have to do with the mayor or the council? What it is, is we have a shortage of skilled workers. Anybody in the construction or trades business will tell you repeatedly, we have a shortage of skilled workers. Now, where are we going to get the skilled workers? Well, the mayor has a role according to the reauthorization of the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, which was reauthorized in 2018. As mayors, you have a critical role in helping your state shape its Perkins Plan. For the first time, the Perkins Law, this is a federal law, urges you and other local leaders to regularly evaluate student needs and how programs are meeting those needs. Now, why are mayors and by fiat also council members involved? Because there's this disconnect between what the schools are doing and what is needed in industry. We need more skilled workers, we need more career and technical education classes, we need more auto shops, wood shops, metal shops, other CTE classes, and so on. So the mayor, you have a role in this. I encourage you to use it and get involved with the school district and with industry and promote having more shop classes. We have seven high schools here in Garden Grove Unified. Only three of them have an auto shop. Four auto shops were cut. We have 10 intermediate schools, and in all 10 intermediate schools, unfortunately, all the wood shops and metal shops were cut. We were down to two at Ralston Intermediate and Alameda's Intermediate were the last two wood shops, and they were cut in June of 2016, which is why I ran for school board the first time and why I ran last time in 2020, is we need more career and technical education stuff. I meet countless plumbers, electricians, and carpenters and tradespeople who tell me over and over again, we need more CTE in the high schools and in the intermediates. So, Mayor, I encourage you and the public, please go to this event tomorrow. Again, you can go to Tom Umberg's website. That'll be tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the County Operations Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have. Anyone else listening to speak that did not submit a pink card? Okay, with that, we will close oral communications, and we're going to recess to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Member Bridgum?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications. Go on to consent calendar, and it's just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'm making a motion.
Second it.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
I'll borrow mine.
Thank you. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council, and that takes us on to consent items. It's recommended that items 3A through 3I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
You mean the balance. We pulled 3 and B.
Oh, yeah.
I'll move to approve the balance, 3C through 3I.
I, right?
I'll second.
I.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds.
Somebody voted twice.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Great. We already heard the public hearing item.
It shows me up there is a no.
I, it's.
I saw him press yes. He pressed yes.
Like 50, like 50 times.
I can vouch for him.
No, I believe you because it actually showed up on my system under eight votes total.
Huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mine was glitching for whatever reason, so.
It's not even November.
So is that a both a yes and no for Josh?
For the record, Councilmember Bridgum voted yes.
Yay!
All right. We already had our public hearing items, so that's completed. We'll move on to items for consideration. We do have three listed, so item 5A.
Item 5A is adoption of a resolution approving a tobacco law enforcement grant and an agreement with Bureau Veritas for providing operational tasks for the implementation of the grant program and to appropriate grant funds in fiscal year 2021-22 for operating costs. And Elena's here to give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The item before you and pleased to announce is to accept the award for the California Department of Justice grant funds to continue supporting the city's tobacco law enforcement program. The DOJ made available about 26 million to local agencies in California to support various tobacco-related programs. These programs include enforcement of state and local laws related to the marketing of tobacco to minors, investigative activities, and compliance checks to reduce illegal sales of cigarettes and tobacco products to the youth. The program is currently administered by our city's code enforcement unit under the Building and Safety Division. And a contracted tobacco enforcement officer is assigned to focus on the city's commercial areas and education efforts. The department has been working hard to address challenges related to code enforcement, which include tobacco, building abatement, health, life and safety, public nuisance, and property management. And I have a presentation. David Dent, our chief building official, is here to share Code Enforcement 4.0 with you.
Give me, Mayor and council members. As Elena warranted, she gave you a brief introduction of the tobacco law enforcement and how we're going to be using that grant to facilitate some of the issues we have in the commercial areas for code enforcement. It's been in place for a little over a couple of years now. It's done a great job in supporting the commercial enforcement and adding another code enforcement officer to that particular branch of our code enforcement division. And again, just want to take this time tonight to kind of touch in and give you guys an update on where code enforcement's at, where we're moving, how we're evolving, and how we're trying to support some of the new age technology that we've been given to our Building and Safety Division. For those of you, just to touch in how we last came, it was a transition from building abatement to code enforcement was the main, was the main change that we took on with the code enforcement division as it came under Building and Safety. But just to reiterate some of the main points that code enforcement's been involved with over the last couple of years is the public exposure to rodents, which has been the main life safety issue. I'd say relatively speaking, there's about 60% of the cases that we involve with code enforcement deal with some nonpermitted structure in resolving that issue. Lately, there's been an uptick on a lot of junk and debris as far as people doing work without a permit, so it's still related to the life safety issue, but most of them are storing and housing some of their construction-related equipment, old furniture, and different things moving out of their house into the front right away. Luckily, short-term rentals are still on the, still on the minimal, coming back from COVID, but we've seen a slight uptick in some of the issues around that. But we've increased our enforcement efforts, and we've tried to mitigate that as much as possible. And again, property maintenance is still an issue throughout the city. Due to the abundance of ADUs being developed, there seems to be a larger use of the front yard for paved areas, so that's, that's been a topic that's been brought up, but we do want to address that still. A code violation is still dealt with with our particular division. So again, just to touch on some of the life safety issues that we've been dealing with, there has been a lot more fires lately. I think because people have been home, it's colder weather, they're plugging in heaters and different things. If the electrical isn't brought up to compliance, that usually tends to be the issue with what starts the fires. Public nuisance, we've really wanted to applaud our efforts in code enforcement as we dealt with a real problem property which was over on the corner of New Hope and Westminster. We've been actively resolving that one and trying to mitigate that one for as long as I've been here. So it's been a great victory in the world of code enforcement. And again, that was a public nuisance-type property. And then that also was a public nuisance and a property maintenance issue. There also has been an uptick in graffiti. We're really working with Public Works to maintain those areas in the commercial area, and that's also what the code enforcement tobacco-related grant assists us with. There's a lot of that commercial graffiti, especially happening on the backside of the buildings where the deliveries come in, the dumpsters are housed, and a lot of the transients tend to gravitate toward those areas. Again, one of the bigger challenges is we are dealing with a lot of nonpermitted structural issues. So I have led the way in trying to resolve as many of those as possible. Most of those deal with investigating and evaluating the property for its safety and then moving forward with the permitting process to bring those structures into compliance. Typically, we'll open up and see what's going on with the footings, with the interior sheer walls, and some of the electrical to resolve those issues, but those tend to be the main issues when it comes to legalizing or bringing up a property into compliance that wasn't permitted. So we also want to assist with, along with the tobacco grant, we're also moving in a direction of our code enforcement staffing. Lisa will give you a little background on where we're at with that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As you'll note, we have a senior officer, four full-time officers and the grant-funded position, and a part-time weekend officer at the direction of the council two years ago when we undertook Code Enforcement 2.0. And to date, one of the efforts we're undertaking is the code enforcement supervisor has been filled with a senior officer to handle our day-to-day needs as it relates to code enforcement responses. We are looking at a higher-level supervisory that encompasses more of code enforcement, but the expertise and the experience in building code and inspection, and that is the next-level supervisory that we'll be looking into. Again, we always try to leverage all of our grant dollars to the best that we can, where we appreciate the continuation of the Department of Justice grants that will allow us to fund our commercial code enforcement office for another three years.
All right, thank you, Lisa. So again, that addresses where we're at with our staffing. Each staff member averages about 200 cases. So I try to assist that by taking on 400 cases myself. But most of those deal with legalizing and working with the customers to resolve their noncompliant issues. So we have the same process. We're still keeping up with knocking on the doors and sending notices via the mail. We do have a new permitting system that's actually facilitating and streamlining some of the nonpermitted issues. Before, we've opened up, that most cities are dealing with, we actually are now involving code enforcement with the plan check process. So what that's done, that's probably been, that'll be the biggest transition going into this year, is basically creating that system that allows people to do their ADU or do their addition along with fixing the issue at the same time. So that tends to be the big thing now, is that a lot of people are discovering that there's nonpermitted issues on their property along with permitted issues. Instead of holding up the whole process, we're allowing the architects and some of the engineers to work into the new projects, the fixes for the old projects, which has actually worked out really well. Again, that just opened up a branch of just having code enforcement check the process, check the plans, and just make sure some of the issues dealing with maybe excess paving or structures that are in the setback, along with the standard development process, to resolve those issues at the same time versus making one required before the other. And again, we've tried to streamline, keeping the processes as non-litigative as possible out of our attorney's hands and saving the cost for the public. So we're doing a little more outreach and educating as much as we can when we're on the property. And Elena will follow up on the remaining tobacco grant breakdown.
Coming back to the item for consideration for tobacco law enforcement program, the awarded funds focuses on continuation of our current program. A contracted tobacco officer, his name is Andre Brown, is trained and provided by one of our building contractual firms, Bureau Veritas, in which, under the scope of work, is 100% funded by the tobacco grant. The DOJ does not require a match from the city, and there's no impact to the general fund. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution approving the MOU with the Department of Justice to participate in the tobacco enforcement grant program in the amount of $467,699 over a three-year period, and service agreement with Bureau Veritas in the amount of $150,000 to implement the enforcement program. Approve appropriation of funds. Approve appropriation of funds in the amount of $162,149 for fiscal year '21-'22 for the first year of operating costs. Authorize the city manager to sign the MOU on behalf of the city, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Baravitas for a one-year term that includes two option years on behalf of the city and to make minor modifications as appropriate. That completes my report, and staff is available for questions that you have.
Thank you, Elena, David, Lisa. I believe Stephanie has some questions.
Yeah, I do. I can't have a code enforcement PowerPoint slip on by without saying a few things. I mean, first of all, kudos, David, and obviously to Assistant City Manager Lisa Kim. I know how diligently and painstakingly hard you work day in and day out for code enforcement in this city, and I can't express enough the importance of code enforcement and what it means to the city. It's kind of this umbrella, this mothership, and all these other arms branch out from it, whether it's our blight and our crime and our homelessness and our coyotes and just overall neighborhood integrity. All of this matters, and all this funnels back into code enforcement. You know, we have four full-time people. I wish I could make that 12. We have one part-time weekend person. I wish there was five. What we have with code, I wish we could double it, triple it, because we need it. We're a big city, and the problems are quite legendary, if I have to be frank. But going back to the green pools and the rats, I'd be remiss, as a vector control trustee, to not bring those up. Do you ever work in tandem with vector control on the rat infestations, on the green pools, or do you handle that just via your department?
Well, yeah, we have their direct contact numbers, so normally when those come up, we'll typically reach out to them and defer them to that particular department. But luckily, I mean, people are demoing their pools now and putting ADUs, so we see a lot less of those, you know, than normal, but yes, we do get those calls every so often.
That's good. Yeah, they have a great program, obviously, with rodent and rat infestation, that's considered a vector, and then, again, the green pools, that's just a breeding ground for mosquitoes, so they put those little mosquito fish in there, or they work on that. And that's great, because it's nice to have them here in Garden Grove, because then that puts your guys back on the street focusing on other things instead of nasty pools and rats. So anyway, thank you for the report. I'm glad we were able to have that this evening, and with that, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions, too.
Go ahead. We have a motion in a second. George.
Yeah, just first, is this grant funding the full-time officer or one of the part-time officers?
It's the full-time officer.
Full-time officer. So I'm assuming he's also handling other things other than just tobacco? Or is he primarily just the tobacco?
No, the full-time officer is only for the tobacco grant. It's not funding any of the regular full-time officers.
So the other three are, we only really have three then really doing code enforcement?
No, we have four full-time officers and one tobacco grant full-time officer.
Okay, okay. One clarification. Again, code enforcement is a thankless job. I'm going to tell you, I get so many inquiries every month on code enforcement, and Dave knows, I'm probably, he hates it when I call him or email or text him, he's going, "Oh, God, George, I'm another chronic complainer." And I literally got a complaint that really shocked me last week. They were upset that there was no code enforcement officer following the trash truck around. And I thought, "That's unusual." Usually, people don't want to get tickets, or they don't want, you know, but anyway, you know, your team is just really great. They do a lot of thankless work. Unfortunately, sometimes they have to sell something to people, you know, nobody wants to hear that they have an electrical problem, or they have a foundational problem, or something that might cost them or one of their family members their lives. And nobody wants to hear that, because it's going to cost a little money to fix the problem. And so then they call, and then they call their councilman, and then they call their, and Dave is out there to sell it. He does a great job, and, you know, it is what it is. And quite frankly, he inherited a mess, because for decades, the city kind of looked the other way, before they started getting all these cases of people actually dying from some of these problems. And so, you know, it's like, we've got to start addressing this. So it's unfortunate that you kind of inherited that, and I really want that supervisor to come in as soon as possible. I know we've been talking about it, but, you know, these guys are working their butts off, and they deserve to have a line supervisor to be there to kind of guide them and keep them out of trouble, so to speak, and make sure everything's are going smoothly. So with that, my comments and my questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, too.
I want to make a comment, a big kudo to the team, because just like George, I have been texting David, Lisa, help, the constituents could reach out to me, but we have come a long way. So that's a big kudo to you guys, and not just about code enforcement, but also about educating the constituent, what to do, you know, how to make it right for wrongdoing. So that's very good, too. Thank you.
Any other?
Just really fast, as I was trying to second and make a comment, but I defer to my, I just want to say, David, I'm so sorry, because I'm one of those council members that has a softy heart for individuals who refuse to take down something that they did. And so I've given him a lot of work, especially with a couple of residents, but I just want to thank you. You are a saint, and you have the patience that I for sure don't have, so I appreciate you taking that on and really taking the time. And I know it can be frustrating, I'm having those repetitive calls and going through, but the fact that you take the time to do that and really try to work with the resident is something that I truly appreciate, especially as someone who's representing an area where many of them are doing it for a living, and it's unsafe, and I get it, but it's, you know, it's hard to convince someone to take something down for their own safety, and it may cost them more money than they have, but ultimately, in the grand scheme of things, it's for their own safety. So I just appreciate your time, your patience, and your energy, and big kudos to all of your staff. I truly appreciate it. I know I've given you more headaches than solutions, so I apologize, but thank you so much for your hard work.
Thanks, Beth.
Yeah, I think it's like many of my colleagues mentioned earlier.
It's something that, very, very difficult to do, right? Like, just like a police officer, right? Every time that we get stopped by a police officer, we just, "Why? Why me?", right? But then, when we are in need of a police officer, then we wish they would be there at the next second. There's one component that I have seen over and over again, and that is the lack of education to the community. There are so many handyman contractors out there, and they were just trying to convince the resident to take a shortcut. Why is that? And many people fall victim to it, because given the length that it takes to get a permit and get it inspected, people couldn't just wait. So many tempted to take a shortcut, and in turn, it hurt them in the long run. So I think it is very important that we also focus on education, to get the resident to know that in the long run, taking a shortcut will just cost them a lot more. And even like Councilmember Bradingham mentioned earlier, maybe even cost them their life. So I would like to ask the code enforcement to take a look at that and see what can we do. If you need help, then maybe we could try to talk to registers, talk to other newspapers to try to help educating our resident. That's all I have.
Mayor, one quick comment. Since everybody's talking about education, and I just sat through Code Enforcement 101, or maybe it was 102, about two weeks ago with David and Mayor Jones, and I think the only two things that you don't need to get a permit for, if I remember, painting and flooring. Is that it? Okay, I got a B, all right? So painting and flooring, somebody had mentioned they thought stucco repair didn't, but anyway, I don't know if that does or not, if that falls under painting, but it still does. Okay, good. So in the interest of education, we'll put it out there, the two things you don't need to get a permit for, painting and flooring.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we call the vote?
Motion, excuse me, motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Item 5B.
Item 5B is adoption of a resolution to approve related documents to authorize issuance of the City of Garden Grove pension obligation bonds and related judicial validation proceedings. And Ms. Song is here to give the report.
Mr. Mayor, council members, just a real quick comment. I want to thank all the council members for all the time that you've spent kind of looking at this very complex issue. We've had discussions with all of you. We had a study session recently. We're not going to go through that long PowerPoint, that long discussion that we had at our study session, but we have summarized it a little bit for members of the public who might not have seen the original long study session. We also, besides Finance Director Patricia Song, we also have our financial advisor, who you met, Anna Sarabian, is here with us for any questions you might have, as well as, I think, Cyrus Terabi, who is our bond counsel with the Stradling Law Firm, who is here for any bond counsel questions you might have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Song.
Great, thank you. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you is a resolution to authorize the issuance of a pension obligation bond. On February 28th, we have conducted a study session to discuss the city's unfunded pension liabilities, the pension obligation bonds, what it is and how it works, and most importantly, how it might be a useful tool to effectively manage our ever-growing pension liabilities. The recording and related slides of the study session have been posted on the city's official website. Today, I will provide a brief recap on the due diligence staff alongside with our consultants have taken and introduced the resolution that will authorize us to take the first step, which is a judicial validation process towards the issuance of the pension obligation bonds. Data on this slide is taken from our most recent CalPERS valuation report. It shows the city has $329 million in unfunded pension liabilities as of June 30th, 2020. This is a debt that the city will need to pay to CalPERS over the next two decades. It is reported on the city's financial statements. Looking forward, CalPERS is projecting our payment on pension debt will continue to grow for another eight years, before gradually declining. With everything status quo, it will take us 23 years to pay it off. Since this is a debt, we have to pay interest on it, and CalPERS is currently charging us 6.8% on the unfunded portion, the amount we owed. Our city manager, Scott Stiles, had shared with you about our double-notch upgrade on the city's underlying credit rating from Standard and Poor's in September last year. Not only this is a very positive reflection on the city's financial condition, it also brought opportunity to us as increased credit rating translates to lowered borrowing costs. However, in the rating report, SMP did point out their concern on our large pension liability, and if not addressed, it might constrain further future upgrades. So this is a comment that I quote from the credit report. Now, staff have been working closely with our consultant to come up with the most suitable solution. Our goals are to reduce pension liability and overall pension costs, maintain our liquidity, strengthen our cash flow, and improve budget predictability. We explored several options. With the current favorable market condition and our recently enhanced credit rating, the financial policies we adopted within the past couple of years, we believe the pension obligation bonds is the most advantageous ones to us. It will achieve the desired outcomes. The issuance of pension obligation bonds will not, not only will not increase the taxes or fees to our constituents, it will, in fact, prevent new taxes or fees, as we can significantly reduce our cost of providing municipal services. There are many ways to structure pension obligation bonds. Detailed analyses were performed on two commonly-used strategies. The slide here shows one of them, the modified level approach. Under the structure, debt payment is leveled for the initial 19 years, then gradually decline to match the CalPERS payment. The debt will be paid off with the same period as if we're paying to CalPERS. But due to the much lower borrowing rate as we projected as of today, the city will be able to save over $100 million over the next 23 years. This slide demonstrates another bond structure, with initial payments matching the amount that the city will be paying to CalPERS. The lower borrowing rate will, in turn, result in a much shortened debt repayment period by 10 years in this illustration. And again, these projections are based off the market condition as of today. Overall savings will be more than $120 million over 23 years. There are, of course, pros and cons with each strategy, and even, you know, with pension obligation bonds as a way to reduce and manage our pension liabilities. So we have been exploring various ways, and we have, we did our due diligence, and we believe that the strategy, it's the most suitable one for us today, mainly because of the favorable market, interest rate, low interest rates, as well as our enhanced credit rating. We don't want to tie up all of our liquidity, and, you know, issuing a bond will not impacting our liquidity in case we need to, say, construct a new police facility or do other major improvements in the capital category. So tonight, we are simply asking the council to approve this resolution, which will authorize the potential issuance of a pension obligation bond. And most importantly, it will allow us to take the initial step to get this process going, which is the judicial validation process. And this process typically takes about 12 to 15 weeks to complete, and we all know that Federal Reserve is raising the interest rates as we speak. So we want to be able to take this favorable market condition and get the biggest savings to the city, and that's why we're asking you to approve that resolution tonight. That concludes my presentation, and we're here happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Patricia. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, George.
You know, when I hear bond, the first thing I think is, you know, bond measure, tax, fees, levies, you know, we're going to hit the taxpayers, and it's a hell no. I mean, we're not going down that road. But this isn't that, and I want the public to be really, really clear. This is not a tax. There's no extra fees. This is the city basically refinancing their mortgage or their loan, right? So we're using the tax revenue that we're already getting and doing it in that regard. So I want to be very clear, this is not a tax fee levy on any member of our community. It's basically just a refi, and it reduces a lot of our debt. It actually saves us a lot of money if everything works out properly. Today's thing, just the resolution to initiate the judicial validation proceeding, you know, that's just a part of the process. A vote today doesn't say we're going to get a bond, we're not doing, you know, they would still have to come back after it went through this whole process, but you start this process, and then you look and you see, okay, how's the market doing? You know, did it tank? Is it doing better? Is it, you know, and we reevaluate once we get past this step, if this is something we want to proceed with or not. So I just want to make that real clear to the members of the public who might be watching. You know, this, we're not necessarily going down, we're just starting the process, basically the exploration of it, you know, initial exploration of it. One thing, one of the members of the public said, that kind of resonated with me, when you're holding a study session and you have the vendor who's going to sell you a bond as your presenter, I don't think that's really kosher. I mean, if you're going to do that, then have two or three different people that might sell bonds, not just one, you know? I think it's kind of slanted when you do that, or at least it gives the impression that it's slanted. So, you know, and that, you know, maybe we're tied to just this specific vendor. Maybe there's a better vendor, maybe there, you know, so just for the future, maybe that's something we look at. But overall, I'm pretty favorable of starting the expiration of this.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm in favor of this, because we're, you know, being fiduciaries, watching over the people's money, we're saving $120 million. So we are kind of reinvesting, refinancing the debt at a lower interest rate. We're managing within our scope here on the City Council what we can do to save our residents' money, right? This hopefully will start a discussion in the county and maybe statewide. If it doesn't solve the unfunded liability- It doesn't solve the unfunded liability of statewide pensions. So that is going to be coming more and more vocal when more cities do these types of things. So hopefully it starts a discussion there, you know, where we're at as a community statewide on unfunded liability. But this is a, is a good thing for the City of Garden Grove to take advantage of the credit rating, outstanding credit rating that we have to manage our money properly, which Garden Grove has always done pretty well jobs since I've been around, and even better now. So, thank you. I'm in favor of this, and basically for the folks out there, it's, you know, if you had an opportunity to take your 25% interest rate on your credit card and get 0% for five year, you know, you would do it. So this is kind of, I know it's kind of, you know, it's not that, but it's similar to that, you know. If you have a, have a way to take advantage of that, might as well do it.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments?
Just one quick comment. John, I appreciate your comments, and I agree with you. I just want to say that it's been a long time when you have a topic that's this weighty and this meaty, if you will, and, and finding a way to extrapolate all the important points and put it in a digestible document such as this or a report. And I want to thank Patricia Song. Thank you for being able to do that. This is so high-level and so sometimes difficult to digest and understand, and I feel that you've done a wonderful job since joining the Garden Grove team in really making this digestible for the community and even for me sometimes. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
I'm in favor of this item 5B. I think it is very important for all of us to realize that taking no action is the worst of, of, of the solution. Everyone for years have been talking about the unfunded liability, and if, whenever it hit us, we could be forced into bankruptcy, and that even worst. There's only, people are talking about that a lot, but, but there have been very little action now. And we are not the city that pioneered this. There's a few cities that have already jumping into this and trying to figure out what would be a better way to deal with it. There is no best way, but there is a better way, and no action is, is, is the worst of it. With CalPERS managing our investment for liability fund, they have not been doing well. And so they have raised the contribution to our cities. And so if we do not deal with it now, we will heading to bankruptcy soon, and that's have been the alarm that had been sounding years ago by OC Register and by many other people. I think this is the right approach, the, the good step forward, and I'm glad that our financial advisor, Patricia, and, and the consultants have been doing a diligent work to come up with a, you know, optimized solution for us to, to move forward, and I hope that it will help us through our trouble for years to come.
Thank you.
Just, you know, it's so rare that we get to give kudos to our financial team in open council session, you know, and coming up with innovative solutions to help us manage this problem. It's been looming for decades, and, and, you know, to kind of take the bull by the horns, and, you know, so, you know, kudos to the whole financial team, Patricia, your whole staff, and, you know, we appreciate all the work you put into this.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I'll echo those comments, just say, great job on this, getting our credit rating up to, to make this spread possible and to move this along. This is projected to save a ton of money for the taxpayers and to help stabilize an uncertain future with regard to the unfunded pension liability. So I would just say, let's expedite getting this done before interest rates move up any further as they are expected to do so, so that we can enjoy as much long-term savings as possible. So with that, I'd like to move it.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, or I mean, vote.
Let's give it a shot.
Just like used to saying that now.
Two years.
Yeah, right.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, item 5C.
Item 5C is approval of the amendment to the City Manager employment agreement to extend the expiration of a separation pay for three years. And City Attorney Sanaval is here to give the report.
Mayor, members of the City Council, before you is a draft amendment to the City Manager's agreement, and it's a very simple amendment. The contract with the City Manager is an at-will contract, so either party can terminate it at-will by just giving notice. Because the City Council is able to terminate the contract for no reason at all, the agreement provides separation pay benefits to the City Manager in the form of 12 months of the then salary of the City Manager. So were the City Council to exercise its authority to terminate, the City Manager would receive that severance pay, basically is what it is. The contract does provide that after eight full years of continuous employment by the City Manager, then that separation pay goes away. So the amendment that's being proposed and is before you today is simply to extend that termination or that term for an additional three years, and so the only change would be to change that eight-year term to 11 years. So that's the only change before you. There is no other changes to the contract, no additional compensation, no changes to any other terms other than specifically that separation pay that is set to expire. We're going to extend it three more years. That is all that's before you, and that's my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question?
Go ahead.
Does it mean that if, if this is approved today, it doesn't mean that you will pack up and leave us in three years, right? It's still open. If we need you to stay, you might consider staying. Is that, is that the case? Or that adopt that way?
You have to talk to my wife about that question.
You talk to his boss, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Actually, more of a comment, you know. Honestly, I think, I, I don't know how any one individual could deal with seven type-A personalities, probably just up here, not to mention all the staff and everything, directors and, you know, this and that, and quite frankly, I think you do a great job. I think you do a great job. Are there things I, I would do differently? Yes, but.
No.
All in all, all in all, strong A-minus grade for me.
Strong A-minus only?
Only A-minus?
A-minus, because A-plus, I don't give A-pluses. But with that being said, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it, but I have a comment. First, I can't believe you've been here that long already, and then I think about the fact that I've already served a full term, and then I'm like, whoa, time is flying by. But I just want to thank you for, for one, because I know how crazy I am and all the calls and the curveballs I throw your way. So I just want to thank you for your work and your dedication to the city and managing all of us, but specifically me. I can only speak for myself, and I know I'm a handful, so I'm just very appreciative, and I, I'm glad you'll be here for another three years at the very least.
Thanks. Did, did you guys want to talk?
You go first.
I just want to thank you, Scott, for everything you do. I mean, I was actually shocked. I'm like, first of all, I wanted an amendment that, sorry, it has to stay five or 10 more years. Secondly, I, I was really shocked, you know, we are so blessed to have him with all his experience coming from Cincinnati and all that. But, you know, for us, we're blessed in the way that, you know, with all the turmoil in, in the county with city managers, even in Southern California, for him to come back and say, hey, I just want an extension on my three years, no money, no nothing, no, and we're like, I'm like, you sure, Scott? You sure?
Crazy.
No money? But you know what? Maybe we could vote on this real quick and get it through, and keep him in, so.
Before he gets mine.
But anyway, Scott, thank, thank you so much. You're doing a great job. We all appreciate you, and, and really just want to publicly thank you.
Mayor, press him.
Well, a big thank you to Scott. I think among the council, I'm the nicest person. I guess not, but thank you for, you know, answer every single request that we ask you, no matter what hour it is. And should we, if we ask you to extend another 10 years, should we sign a petition with your wife? But thank you.
All right, I'm going last, and then we'll call the vote. I just want to echo some of the compliments that were given there. Could you even imagine picking up and moving to another city in another state and hitting the ground running the way Scott has? I mean, he's truly remarkable character. So being a city manager, as some of you alluded to, has got to be a very, very difficult, challenging job, everything you've got to deal with. Scott came over, moved into the city, bought a house here in the city, became part of the community, not just part of the city government, and really hit the ground running. I mean, within his first year, he knew everybody I know, and I've been here my whole entire life working at this, so.
Right.
Yeah, truly, truly amazing opportunity to work with you, Scott. I feel like it's been sort of a dream team environment with this council and, and all the leadership we have at City Hall, all the brain power. We've just been able to accomplish a lot of great things. It's been a fun run, so thanks for agreeing to stick around for a few more years.
Hate to say anything. I'm glad you're here, Scott. I'm done, thank you.
All right.
But it was no brainer for Scott. He only had to work until 11 at night.
Yeah.
No, we need him past midnight sometimes.
Yeah. He only does half days, 12 hours.
Motion, motion received, seven yes votes.
Well done. All right.
That's the only certificate you're getting, too.
Take the rest of the night off, we'll see you in the morning.
Almost. Okay, that takes us on to matters. We have no, no items listed. Does anyone feel compelled that they need to do themselves speak at this hour?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry, really fast. John, John Montanges, and they helped me get some talking points, so yes, I do, I do have something, I'm compelled. I want to talk about quickly just Garden Grove Gems. You may have seen some of the promotional material go out in the water bill and so forth. I've been bugging staff about this for years, and Garden Grove Gems is kind of reborn out of the ashes of the Garden Grove Pride and Home Beautification Awards. I was a judge one year, as I'm sure a lot of people have been, and so it's been revamped, and I really appreciate just all the work from Community Services and John Montanes's team to kind of give this a fresh new take and a fresh new look. So it's called Garden Grove Gems now. It's a virtual program. Participating homes will be self-nominated. Nomination period will begin April 11th through Friday, April 29th. The community will vote online for one home per district, and second top vote will be runner-up. The voting period will be May 9th through Friday, May 13th. Six districts, two winners per district for a total of 12 winners, and there'll be most likely a spotlight sometime in June and a small reception for the winners in the CMC. So I'm really excited about this. Get your yards looking great, spring's coming, and nominate yourself or someone you know for Garden Grove Gems. That's it.
Kim, go ahead.
All right, I'll be really fast. First, I, I just wanted to share that I had a really great meeting with Thomas House's new executive director, and I'm really excited at the change. I feel like maybe we had some issues in the past, but just having a conversation with her, I'm really excited to see how this is going to be a more fruitful relationship for Buena Clinton, and I just want to give a kudos to the Buena Clinton staff. She had rave reviews, and her experience so far has been really great. She also gave a wonderful shout-out to our mayor, who participated, I think, in their 35th anniversary, so thank you so much for being there. Shout-out to IT. I believe the reported in-issue function on the website has been revised, and I think a little bit more to my satisfaction, so thank you for that. As President of the Orange County Division of League of California Cities, Mayor, you have a lot of people excited about Lucha Libre for Open Streets. You're going to have some folks from all over coming just to watch you, so be ready for that. And lastly, oh, second to last, staff, I have a, I have a request. I'd like to get some more information regarding this solar power subsidy that's going on. I've heard a lot of concerns regarding how this is going to affect our low-income communities. Essentially, there's going to be some sort of subsidy for folks who have this, this solar power function, but that, you know, hidden tax and burden on, on those who don't, and that's going to be a lot of my residents. I know that this is something that Edison has been going around to different cities to ask for support. I've heard a little bit about it during my meeting on the, on the League of California Cities OC Division, so I just wanted to get some more information to see if this is something we want to sign on to support or just learn, because I'm, I'm not quite sure. And lastly, Happy Women's, International Women's Day. I just want to thank all of the wonderful, powerful, strong women we have sitting here that help run this city, that help Scott day in, day out. A lot of our higher-level staff are, are women, and so I'm really proud to say that, and I hope one day, after many, 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 many years and much more gray hair, when Scott Stiles retire, that maybe that seat will be filled by a woman, and maybe we'll have seven up here on this dais. So Happy International Women's Day. Thank you all for all that you do.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're good. General Counsel, anything to report out?
We did have a closed session earlier this evening, and there is no action to report out.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles, anything for the go-to the order?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, first of all, thank you for all the kind words for the extension of my contract. I sincerely appreciate it. You know, Garden Grove's been great to me and my family. You know, we do live here, we, you know, we've, we, we love the community, and, you know, I sent a little note to all of our department directors after I put this on the agenda, and I thanked our department directors. I said, one of the reasons I'm making this decision is because of my respect for all of you, and, you know, as you've heard tonight, our directors and their staff do all this hard work, and I just kind of liked the little, the symphony director trying to keep everything going, but they, they're the experts, they know what they're doing, and you've, we put a great team together, people that are doing really wonderful things. I'm really, you know, I wasn't interested in more money and more benefits. You know, there is a lot of, there is a lot of confusion going on in the county, and, you know, when you're in a good spot and you like the people you work with, that, you know, that means a lot. So just wanted to say that. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, and, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you're going to emphasize this or not, but we will be here at the next council meeting. We'll give you a complete presentation on the Open Streets event coming up. So it's going to be here before we know it. You know, the event is on April 2nd, for everybody that's listening, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. It's our event for car-free streets, pop-up activities, and a lot more activity in our Civic Center area. People can go to ggcity.orgopenstreets for some more information, but we will be back here. I've seen a presentation that John Montanes and his staff have put together about the event. I think they're going to blow this thing out of the water, and there's already a lot of publicity out there. I think we're going to have a lot of people coming to Garden Grove for this event. I think it's going to be a lot of fun, so you'll get a complete briefing at the next council meeting on this, so.
And I've got to reveal that although we're calling it Open Streets, it's actually just a birthday party for Fat in Disguise, because that's, that's his birthday.
Shouldn't it be closed streets? Because we're technically closing the streets, right?
I know, confusing, huh? We're opening them up to take them back.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't know. I get it. So unfortunately, I have to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of two former city employees who recently passed away. Danny Castro, who retired in 2005, worked in Public Works and served the city for 40 years, and also Margie Abola, who retired just this last December in 2021. She worked in Finance Department and served the city for 14 and a half years. So my condolences to the families and coworkers of both Danny and Margie. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your evenings, everyone.